Call to order, City of Forest Park, Council Meeting Number 1337, June 3, 2019. Let us stand for the pledge, please. Clerk, call to roll, please.
Burns?
Here.
Collins?
Here.
Herbie?
Here.
Holt?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Ness?
Here.
Let the record show that all council members are present for the meeting. Item number two is minutes. You would have received copies of minutes in your packets. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? There are none? Presentations, we have none. Item four, communications from the public. This is a time for citizens to comment on matters before council or to ask questions of concern to them. When recognized, please come forward to the podium, give your name and address, and then state your comments or questions. Council meetings are taped, recorded for ease of transcriptions. Comments are limited to five minutes. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address council? If so, please come and sign in, tell us who you are, and then tell us what we can do for you.
I need a pen. Thank you. Thank you, thank you. My name is Bruce Kahler. I live at 1071 West Kemper Road, across the street from St. Matthias, the last house on the right going east before you get to Islanddale. My family's lived in Forest Park since 1959, or somebody in my family has lived in Forest Park since 1959. I've moved back a few years ago. Being back on Kemper Road, I've renovated this house that I'm living in. I think I've done a nice job to it. But the trash that is coming down the street, if I can hand these to you, just to show you some photos? It's really gotten bad. I collected the trash just in my yard, not my neighbors'. It was gonna blow into my yard anyway, but this is just in the month of May of last year. And in the month of May of last year, where the kids were getting out of high school, going to Kroger's, dropping trash. The other photo of the other bag is from June, July, and August. So in one month, I collected more trash off my yard than three months. So it was the kids getting out of school, it was warm. And on the way to school, it's Rice Krispie treats and, you know, Pop Tarts and all this stuff is just being thrown on the ground. On the way home, it's Wendy's, it's bags of chips from Kroger's. It's ridiculous amount of trash that I pick up in my yard. And what I would love to see the council do is put some well-placed signs, say at Wynton and Kemper, maybe four, or maybe a dozen around these areas Waycross and Northland, where these kids are getting stuff and they're just throwing this trash on the ground. And it really needs to stop. I've seen several times, well, in my yard, beer bottles, pop bottles. I mean, it's just smashed all over my driveway. And I've seen coming out of Southland onto Kemper, some young guys threw a Styrofoam thing out right onto the Springdale side, hit their driveway, and there with the napkins and the forks and this. Just, they don't care. And I don't know if you need to put signage that says, "Keep Forest Park Clean, $250, $250 fine." I remember getting in trouble as a kid here and having to do community service. And I don't know if they still do that. But, you know, when you're out in the woods, cleaning the woods, and picking up trash, you know, it's a little degrading for a 14, 15, 16-year-old versus the parents paying a $250 fine or a $500 fine. And I guarantee you, if parents are paying a $500 fine, someone's gonna get their butt probably whipped, or they're gonna have to do some community service to pay it off. And it's just something needs to be done about the amount of trash. And there's no reason to keep Forest Park, I mean, this stuff. And like I said, it's not just the kids, but it's also adults. I mean, beer bottles, cigar bottles, I mean, it's everything. And I think we just have to hit some signs where the main intersections are. Like I said, maybe 15 or 16 signs out there that get people realizing you're gonna get fined if you get caught. And I just think it's ridiculous, and I hate to see it happen. And if they could put some trash cans, maybe at the corner of Islanddale, or, you know, by Aldi's or somewhere where these kids are walking, they can at least know that they can drop the trash there instead of just pitching it. So, and it's just, it's the Kroger handy wipe things. I went up to the Jiffy Lube and I was complaining. I thought it was theirs. And I realized it's the Kroger's. It's blowing out of the carts, and it's blowing all the way down to where I live. So it's just a combination of things. But if the schools, and this isn't the school board, but if the schools could start teaching these kids that, you know, you just don't throw your trash down because you don't wanna carry it any longer. But some well-placed trash cans would make a big difference, I'm sure. So that's all I have to say. If you can do something about it, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you. As the city manager said, we will obviously take that unadvised, and we will do what, well, we can. So he will deal with that along with property maintenance. Thank you. We'll move to item number five, reports of standing committee. The first of those is Public Safety, Councilwoman Ness.
I don't have a report at this time.
Any questions for Councilwoman Ness?
The only thing I'd like to add is that Law Enforcement Expo was at the Tri-County Mall on yesterday. Officer Rebecca Evers did a really, really nice job. They saw over, they saw almost, I think it's 160-plus families over there that day. So it really went well.
Okay. Any questions for Councilwoman Ness? Hearing none, Councilwoman Ness, I don't have any items for you on the 10th. Do you have any to add?
I do not.
Next committee report is Ways and Means, Councilwoman Herbie.
I have no report.
Questions for Councilwoman Herbie? Hearing none, I have one item on the agenda for you. It's the Tax Review Committee, TIRC. Next committee report is Community Development, Mr. Burns.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have no report, but I do have a comment related to the gentleman that just discussed the issue of trash. I agree with him in the sense that throughout the spring of every year, trash becomes an issue. And we have fought this issue, but we've gotta figure out a different way. Because Forest Park is becoming a city. The corridors of Forest Park are becoming very transient, right? As you go from Springdale to...
Seven Hills.
Seven Hills, thank you. And to Pleasant Run along Mill. You witness people throwing trash out of their cars. As you go from 275 southbound to Green Hills, you witness people throwing things out of their car. And it's more than just students. It's adults. These are people of responsibility. And we've gotta figure out a way to address this. Because Public Works can't keep up. We can't call rumpkey enough. But, and since it is a transient issue oftentimes, it's hard to enforce. So I would really encourage the staff to figure out something that we can do that would deter or encourage folks to use receptacles or hold their garbage, especially when it comes out of their car. Because I've watched, I've witnessed people just throw things directly out of their car with no regard. So somehow, we've gotta figure that out.
I think that's, it's right on the top of the list with the improvement of the neighborhoods, the improvement of the streets, the cleanliness. This generally is a clean community.
Right.
It's, you're right. I too have witnessed it, and I can understand it. It's a different mindset than I understand. How, I mean, you look at my car, I've got three or four Diet Coke cans waiting to be thrown away.
Right.
Instead of just throwing them out, I just leave it in my car until I get to a garbage can. But it is gonna be enforcement, I think. And I think we need a reputation that we just take this stuff serious and we're not playing anymore.
Correct.
I mean, not that we were playing to begin with, but it's something that's a number-one priority. You know, property maintenance, grass, garbage, things like that lead to the deterioration of the community. And we need to stop, it's little things like that that we need to stop and get our hands around and improve the appearance of this community. And I think that's the only way we can do it, is just to make it known to those transient folks that are going from here to there, that if they do it here, they've got a possibility of getting caught. And number two, if they do, we're going to stop them and enforce it. And hopefully the word'll get out, "Don't do it here." I mean, that's...
Right.
We'll put some signs, and we'll definitely put some garbage cans. But, I mean, I've literally seen people walk by a garbage can and throw stuff on the ground.
And that's exactly the point. It's a civic responsibility question for our residents and our students. But it also becomes an enforcement question for those who are passing through or driving along. Because, you know, so we've gotta figure out a way to create that civic responsibility for the folks who are walking, whether that be a student or an adult. But we'll just say residents in general, because I don't think it's just our students. But, and we've also gotta figure out the enforcement for the full effect. So I would just encourage you guys to work and figure that out. The other thing I would like to bring up, in last week, I did not, our last meeting, I did not mention why I voted nay on the resolution related to the trailers. And I did that because I think that particular resolution or ordinance is somewhat far-reaching in the fact that we have workers that come on behalf of our residents to cut their grass, to make deliveries and such, that have trailers. And the way that particular ordinance read, it literally prohibits or inhibits that person from parking their trailer while they're cutting grass, because it says "all" trailers. It doesn't say "some trailers," it doesn't say specific types of trailers. It says "all." So I would like to bring that up for consideration in the next work session to have further discussion on that particular item. Thank you.
Mr. Burns, any questions for Mr. Burns?
Are we gonna just talk about further that ordinance at a work session or address that now?
Well, at a work, he said he'd like to have it on the agenda for a work session.
Okay.
Mr. Burns, all ready for the next work session? Now I have for you, age presentation and contract. Next committee report is Law Committee, Councilwoman Collins.
Mr. Mayor, I do not have a report from the Law Committee at this time. However, I am available for questions.
Any questions for Councilwoman Collins? Hearing none. Councilwoman Collins, I have no items on the agenda for you for the work session of the 10th. Do you have any to add?
No, I do not.
Next committee report is Human Resources Committee, Councilwoman Holt.
I do not have a report on human resource. However, on behalf of the Beautification Committee, the judging of the yards will be this Saturday and Sunday. That will conclude my report.
Any questions for Councilwoman Holt? Councilwoman Holt, I have no items on the agenda for you. Do you have any to add?
No, I do not.
Next committee report is Public Improvement and Facilities, Councilwoman Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do not have a report at this time.
Any questions for Councilwoman Moore? Councilwoman Moore, I think... I have one item on the agenda for you, police vehicle lease purchase. Do you have anything else to add?
No, I do not.
Okay, the next report is Internal Government Relations and Communications. That one is mine. I have no report. However, I'd answer any questions if there are any. We'll now move to item number six, the mayor's report. Just to repeat what Councilwoman Moore just said, keep in mind that this coming weekend is your judging. At this point, we need one more judge. We've got them all covered except one. So if any of you folk would like to be a judge, call Ms. Wilson Noe tomorrow so she can finalize her list for the weekend. That would conclude my report. I'll answer any questions if there are any. Oh, before, one other thing. I just, just for your information, I would say that at this point, I know that in at least two, if not three, of the previous staff meetings that the city manager has let the staff know about the priorities in terms of the aesthetics of the city. And one of the things he emphasizes is that all employees are to be public watchers, to use a different term, for the city in terms of property maintenance, including, in addition, Mr. Burns, to trash on the streets and those kind of things. As he said, you know, we have a small number of employees in community development, especially property maintenance. They can't be everywhere and see everything at the same time. So we have to rely on, not only the remainder of the staff, but as Mr. Burns alluded to, we have to rely on our citizens as well. There are some ordinances, codes, laws, however you want to define them, that are much easier to see and enforce than others. Unfortunately, car drive-by throws out trash. If nobody identifies that vehicle or gets a license number or whatever and haven't got it to pass it on, it becomes a little bit like our age-old ordinance for noise. You hear the noise, you see the vibration of the windows and the bouncing of the cars. But by the time, if you call, by the time the police officer gets there, that car's usually gone, long gone. So we have to be, we, all of us as citizens of Forest Park, have to be a little more watchful and a little more diligent. And again, I would say to my fellow council members, we have to go a step beyond. We have to set examples. If you see it reported, but in addition to reported, I know it's not the cleanest, it's not the most desirable thing in the world. But, you know, I still carry those gloves and trash bags with my car. Because I feel like I should pick that up. It's thrown out there. I shouldn't necessarily wait or call and say, "Hey, somebody threw a McDonald's cup out over at the corner of New Orland and Waycross when I can pick that one up." Now, that, you know, I'm not suggesting that picking up one cup is gonna make a lot of difference, but at least that's one less stair than it was before. But I just wanted to make the rest of council aware that the city manager is definitely pushing these issues with the staff. And from what I have seen, the staff has responded. That would end my report. Next item on the agenda is item number seven, City Manager's Report.
Thank you. We, all of the departmental reports have been filed, and they're available for review. A couple of items that may be of interest to the citizens and to this group. First of all, you will see, hopefully, when the city council approves the ordinance with regards to grass, the public will start seeing, we're gonna just call them yellow signs. And they will be notices that a person needs to cut their grass and cut their weeds, and that they have a certain amount of five days to get that done. So you'll, don't be surprised if you see those and you're driving around. They're made to, they're designed to basically let the public know that the city is serious about grass and property maintenance and other issues as well, and the appearance of the community. And we want all of our citizens to know that it's something that we are attempting to enforce and make it just a nicer place to live. That being said, we are going to hire a couple of police recruits. And we did give the Police Agility Drills yesterday, Saturday, and had several good folks pass it. And we're looking to fill those positions over the next couple of months, I guess. But we're in the process, and we are shorthanded, but we're going to hopefully fill it and fill them with some good individuals. We are keeping on the same note from public safety. We are, next, this coming Wednesday, entering into the next step in negotiations with the fire department. We'll be speaking with them as well. And hopefully, we'll be able to bring something back to city council with regards to that after fact-finding on Wednesday. Other than that, I'd be glad to answer any questions that anyone has.
Any questions for City Manager? Before we move to item number eight, I would just air Councilwoman Ness, and I'm sure you've done it already. Last week, we can have ago, the fire department took delivery of its new fire engine. It's a very unique piece of equipment, if for no other reason. When you see it, or when you just go to see it, if you don't happen to see it on the street, try to see it at night after it's dark, because it has the unique feature. It doesn't necessarily glow, but it's very, very visible. I think it's the tinting of the paint at night. It's, you know, it's not quite sci-fi, but close. So, like I said, Councilwoman Ness, I know you've looked at it already. But take a look at it. It's a good buy, good for the fire department, public safety. We'll go to item number eight, other reports. First of all, being the Law Director, Mr. Wyckoff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to address Councilperson Burns' concern about the amendment to 73.20. The background on that was, we had people who live in the residential area with trailers, most of them empty, and they would just park there endlessly. And the idea of our commercial parking prohibition is to keep the residential nature alive in those residential areas. So we only amended the definition of what a commercial vehicle was. Previously, it was "other non-commercial trailer used for commercial purposes." We amended that to be "any trailer." But to address what you mentioned, an exception to getting a ticket for a violation is if it's used on the job for one hour, and it does not apply to trailers used for conveying the necessary tools and materials to the premises where labor using the tools and materials is performed during the actual parking time. So if someone's there mowing the grass with a trailer, or if someone's there doing home remodeling for eight hours, as long as they're parking there while doing the job, they are not in a violation. Okay? And then, since the last council meeting, I consulted with Fire Inspector Smith about a building violation that's being worked on with Rafiq Nekouzi, our chief building officer at Clean Lights. There's some issue regarding, some concerns about the storage of plastic material there. I also worked with the police department. We're trying to work out a new policy on two issues, body cavity searches as well as strip searches. So we have a firm policy in place of how that should be handled. I did review the proposed contracts for the aggregation of the gas and electric services and approved them. I also sent to Chris Anderson some research I did on landlord registration requirements. And then finally, I did my annual letter to our auditors regarding pending or threatened litigation. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Otherwise, that would be the end of my report.
Any questions for Law Director? Mr. Burns?
Thank you, John, for your comments. And with that, I would just retract my request for the work session item.
Okay. Thank you, sir. The next report would be the Clerk of Counsel, Ms. Boyd.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to report that ordinance number 09-2019 and 15-2019 through 17-2019 were posted as required. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions for Clerk of Counsel? Hearing none, we'll move to item number nine, new business. There is a motion, Councilwoman Herbie.
Yes, I would move to suspend the rules requiring the reading in full on two separate days and read for the first time by title only ordinances number 18-2019 and 19-2019.
Second.
We move to second, that we suspend the rules requiring the reading in full on two separate days and read for the first time by title only ordinance numbers 18-2019 and 19-2019. Is there any discussion?
Only that they were posted as required.
Yes, sir.
Did the changes get made to these ordinances? Okay, just making sure.
Okay, any other discussion or questions? Hearing now, would the clerk please call to roll on the motion to suspend the rules?
Burns?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Ness?
Yes.
The motion to suspend the rules passed a 7-0. Item A under ordinance is ordinance number 18-2019. Would the clerk please read this ordinance by title only?
Ordinance number 18-2019. An ordinance authorizing all actions necessary to effect a governmental natural gas aggregation program with opt-out provisions pursuant to Section 4929.26 Ohio Revised Code directing the Hamilton County Board of Elections to submit a ballot question to the electors and declaring an emergency.
Okay, is there a motion, Mr. Burns?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move for the adoption of ordinance number 18-2019.
Second.
We move to second, that we adopt ordinance number 18-2019. Is there a discussion, Mr. Burns? Yes, sir, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to amend ordinance number 18-2019 in Section 3. And thusly, switching, removing the word "switching" and adding termination, and removing the terms under Division A of Section 4928 dot 14, or Division B of Section 4928 dash dot 35, Ohio Revised Code, until the person chooses an alternative supplier, period, and adding "by the natural gas service company providing distribution services, or service, for the person's retail gas load until the person chooses an alternative supplier."
Second to the amendment.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we adopt the, that we amend the motion as described by Mr. Burns. Any discussion on the amendments?
I think the amendment is really just to clarify who the intended parties are related to the, the request for the supplier's responsibility and who should make those requests. So with that, I would just urge the adoption of the amendment.
Any further discussion on the amendment? Hearing now, would the clerk call, call the roll on the amendment to the motion?
Collins?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Ness?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
The amendment to the motion passes 7-0. At this point, we would have discussion on the amended motion. Mr. Burns?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the first of two request amendments for ballot issues for energy aggregation. The first being ordinance 20, 18-2019 in question, which is related to gas and gas only. This is the opt-out option to be placed on the ballot, or the actual issue to be placed on the ballot, giving our citizens the right to opt out of the, the participation. Both items need to be placed on the ballot individually. And with that, I would urge adoption of ordinance 18-2019.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, would the clerk please call the roll on amended ordinance number 18-2019?
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Ness?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Ordinance, amended ordinance 18-2019 passes 7-0. Next item on the agenda is item B, ordinance number 19-2019. Would the clerk please read this ordinance by title only?
Ordinance number 19-2019, an ordinance authorizing all actions necessary to effect a governmental electricity program with opt-out provisions pursuant to section 4928 point 20 Ohio Revised Code directing the Hamilton County Board of Elections to submit a ballot question to the electors and declaring an emergency.
Is there a motion, Mr. Burns?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move for the adoption of ordinance number 19-2019.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we adopt ordinance 19-2019. Is there discussion, Mr. Burns?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the second of, of the two ballot request ordinances for energy aggregation. This specific ordinance is with respect to electricity only. And as I said previously, both ordinances are required as both issues are unique and distinct, and they must be voted on individually as well as in, on the ballot individually. Thank you.
Is there a question?
It's actually kind of a question for John. John, the, the motion for the gas was amended to change this language. The language in the ordinance for the electric is identical. Is there a need to change that as well?
I haven't had a chance to research that, I don't know.
What?
It's not. It's different. Mr. Wright?
They are different ordinances.
I know they're different ordinances, but the language is...
No, it's not.
They, they were originally identical, and that's where we found the mistake. That's why we amended it. So, the electric in section three is, is, remains the same, but the natural gas, section three changed. The last sentence changed in section three.
But I'm looking at, at the electric, and it's identical to what we just, just changed.
You, it was. Both of them in section three originally, when we proposed it, were the same. And we found out that the natural gas had to change. The electric does not need to change, but the elec, the natural gas did, did need to change.
Thank you. Okay, any other discussion? Hearing now, would the clerk please call the roll on 19-2019?
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Ness?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Ordinance number 19-2019 passes 7-0. Next item is item C, resolution 13-2019. Would the clerk read this resolution in full?
Resolution number 13-2019, authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract between the City of Forest Park and the Truck Drivers, Chauffeurs, and Helpers Local Union 100 Public Works Employees. Whereas the labor contract between the City of Forest Park and the Forest Park Public Works Employees Bargaining Association expired on December 31, 2018, and whereas negotiators for both parties have tentatively reached a mutually agreeable contract subject to the final, to the final approval by the city council, and whereas it is in the, it is the intention of the council of the City of Forest Park to enter into said contract marked Exhibit A, now therefore be resolved by the council of the City of Forest Park, Ohio. Section one, that the city manager is hereby authorized and directed to enter into a contract with the Truck Drivers, Chauffeurs, and Helpers Local Union Number 100 Public Work, Public Works Employees in accordance with the terms and conditions as described in the attached contract dated January 1, 2019 and marked Exhibit A. Section two, this resolution shall be in full force and take effect upon its passage.
Is there a motion, Councilwoman Herbie?
Yes, I move adoption of resolution number 13-2019.
Second.
It's moved in second that we adopt resolution 13-2019. Is there a discussion, Councilwoman Herbie?
Yes, just that this is to approve the contract, or authorize the city manager to enter into the contract with the Truck Drivers, Chauffeurs, and Helpers at a 2% increase per year for the bargaining unit members, and I would urge adoption of this resolution.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, would the clerk please call the roll on resolution 13-2019?
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Ness?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Resolution 13-2019 passes 7-0. Next item on the agenda, motion, Mr. Burns?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to suspend the rules requiring the reading in full and read by title only resolution numbers 14-2019 and 15-2019.
Second.
These resolutions were posted six days prior to the...
Second.
It's been moved in second that we suspend the rules requiring a reading in full and read by title only resolutions number 14 and 15, 2019. Is there a discussion? Hearing none, would the clerk please call the roll on the motion to suspend?
Moore?
Yes.
Ness?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Resolution 13-2019 passes 7-0. I'm sorry, the motion to suspend passed 7-0. Now, with resolution, item D, resolution 14-2019, would the clerk please read this resolution by title only?
Resolution number 14-2019, amending the resolution setting rates of pay for civil and non-civil service employees.
Is there a motion, Councilwoman Herbie?
Yes, I would move adoption of resolution number 14-2019.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we adopt resolution number 14-2019. Is there a discussion? Herbie?
Yes, this is a companion to the previous resolution. Whenever we enter into a contract for an increase in salaries, we have to amend our appropriations to set that rate, or the, we have to amend the resolution that sets the rates for those offices to cha, to make those changes. And so that's why I would urge adoption of this resolution.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, would the clerk please call the roll on 14-2019?
Ness?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 14-2019 passes 7-0. Next item on the agenda is item E, resolution 15-2019. Would the clerk please read this resolution by title only?
Resolution number 15-2019, a resolution to place a lien against the residential property at 1294 Waycross Road, declared a public nuisance and demolished by the City of Forest Park to recover the total cause of city action to remediate the unsafe conditions.
Is there a motion, Mr. Burns?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move for passage of resolution number 15-2019.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we adopt resolution 15-2019. Is there a discussion, Mr. Burns?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This particular property has been deemed to be uninhabitable and has been condemned by the staff, and the staff is recommending that it be demolished as it relates to remediation of unsafe conditions for the other surrounding homes. All the necessary actions to locate the owner, notify, and, and others have been done, and this is the final step to remediate that condition. And I would urge adoption of resolution 15-2019.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, would the clerk please call the roll on 15-2019?
Burns?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Ness?
Yes.
Resolution 15-2019 passes 7-0. Next item on the agenda, item F, resolution 16-2019. Would the clerk please read this resolution in full?
Resolution number 16-2019, accepting the bid of Detroit Salt to furnish salt for the 2019 through 2020 winter season. Whereas the City of Forest Park has heretofore advertised for bids for the furnishing of the icing salt for the 2019 through the 2020 winter season according to law, and whereas said bids were received and opened on May 8, 2019, and the bids were tabulated as follows: Supplier Compass Minerals, price per ton dumped $80.49. Supplier Morton Salt, price per ton dumped $93.93. Supplier Cargill Inc., price per ton dumped $81.28. And supplier Detroit Salt, price per dump, price per ton dumped $75.34. Now therefore be resolved by the council of the City of Forest Park, Ohio. Section one, that the bid of Detroit Salt at a price of $75.34 ton dumped load is hereby accepted. Section two, that the city manager is hereby authorized and directed to enter into a contract with Detroit Salt for the purchase of de-icing salt for the 2019-2020 winter season. Section three, this resolution shall be in full force, will be, shall be enforced from and after its passage.
Is there a motion, Councilwoman Moore?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move for the adoption of resolution number 16-2019.
Second.
It's moved in second that we adopt resolution 16-2019. Is there a discussion, Councilwoman Moore?
No, the clerk just read in full. We just recommend and urge adoption of this resolution.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, would the clerk please call the roll on 16-2019?
Collins?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Ness?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Resolution 16-2019 passes 7-0. Next item on the agenda is item G, a motion, Mr. Burns?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that council recess be from August 6, 2019 through September 8, 2019.
Second.
It's moved in second that we, that the council will recess from August 6, 2019 through September 8, 2019. Is there a discussion, Mr. Burns?
Just that this is our typical August recess period, and if there are any meetings or any requirements for emergencies or, or, that, anything that will require us to meet, that would be, we will be notified by staff or the mayor or the clerk. But as typical, it's generally not, but we'd have to leave that open just in case.
Any further discussion? Hearing now, all those in favor of the recess motion, let it be known by the sound of voting aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Is there any other business to come before the body? Is there any other business to come before the body? Hearing none. Meeting is adjourned.